We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for September the 17th, 2024. The city council should have the minutes from the committee of the whole from September the 3rd. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
A move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. The Industrial Development Board, Mayor pro Tim Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have two vacancies. Terms begin October 10, 2024, and October 9, 2030. We have two incumbents, Chris Roberts, who served two full terms, and Jay Googe, who served one full term. I would like to ask us to reappoint Chris Roberts to a third term.
Second. Have a motion and a second for Auburn University President Chris Roberts. Any comments from the dais?
So, on this deterrent part of it, I don't have no problem with it. I was just wondering about the terms. How many terms can a person serve?
They can serve at the pleasure of the council, so they can serve as many as we'd like for them, too. Sure. I appreciate you asking that clarification question, Ms. Taylor. I just think, again, I've said it before, I think it's probably unusual, and I think it's a great opportunity for us and a blessing that our university president would seek to spend some of his time, that he doesn't have a lot of, that's not involved with his job, assisting our community in our city as we do industrial development recruiting, and I'm certainly appreciative of that. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second for Dr. Chris Roberts. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Chris Roberts is confirmed. We'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Excuse me. All right?
For the second vacancy, I'm held by Jay Googe, who served one full term. I would like to nominate Jay Googe for a second full term.
Second. Have a motion and a second for Dr. Jay Googe. Any comments, questions? Again, I'll echo that here's a former university president. He's at Auburn, and he wants to be a part of what we're doing here, and he's kind of moonlighting at another university out west right now, but he'll be back. He's still a resident of Auburn, but he's helping them through a transitional time out there. But Dr. Googe has been a great supporter of our community and a great supporter of the Industrial Development Board. Happy to have him returning. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Dr. Jay Googe will be confirmed later on the agenda. All right, Lee County Youth Development.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. Term begins October 1, 2024, and ends September 30, 2028. We have an incumbent, Jay Jones, who served four full terms. I would like to recommend that we nominate Jay Jones for another full term.
Second. Have a motion and a second for Jay Jones. Any comments or questions?
I think he's probably got the experience to do that position.
Been around a little while. Thank you, Chief.
I would like to echo that and say that Sheriff Jay Jones has been sheriff since January of 1999. He's been with the Sheriff's Department more than 45 years, and he is a man of high integrity and certainly long experience, and he is well-suited to be a member of the Lee County Youth Development Center. So, I heartily recommend, I mean, second that nomination, or endorse.
And just for everybody to understand, Sheriff Jones actually is a resident of our community, and so he's part of our responsibility. If we want to put him on, it's our responsibility to nominate Sheriff Jones to be on the Lee County Youth Development Center, since he's an Auburn resident. Okay? All right. Any other comments? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Sheriff Jay Jones will be reappointed to the Lee County Youth Development Center. Proposed East University sidewalk from Old Mill to McKinley update, Councilman Mormon, I'll turn it over to you right now.
Thank you, sir. The issue of a second sidewalk on East University arose from a concerned citizen regarding the safety of students walking to and from Auburn High School using Old Mill Road and University. This is a busy intersection, and it's difficult to cross on foot to get to the sidewalk on the east side of University. The normal route for students who don't cross at Old Mill is to go up University on the west side, traveling through people's yards, and entering the school property there across from McKinley, where the school buses turn in. At McKinley, there is a traffic, I'm sorry, a public safety officer who directs traffic at peak periods. The main function of this officer is to help school buses enter and exit school property, but the officer also tries to accommodate students who are crossing by foot. A solution put forward by a citizen is to place a second sidewalk on the west side of University where the students are currently walking, to allow the students a firmer and safer walking path on that side of the street until they can get up the hill to where the school bus entrance is at McKinley. As we looked at this as a council, another safety issue surfaced that related to the residents along this route. We learned that the installation of the requested second sidewalk may damage trees along the proposed route. The trees were not just ornamental, they served as protection to a home. Twice in the last year, and several times in the recent past, cars have left the road in front of this house at a high rate of speed and could have crashed into the home had these trees not caught the vehicles. The council requested a few weeks back for the city staff to look at, into possible ways to try to save these trees and still construct the second sidewalk, possibly using alternate materials. The city manager has indicated that the staff is ready with a report, and we look forward to seeing how to proceed.
All right. Ms. Crouch?
You're going to hear from two of our department heads tonight, the city engineer and engineering services manager, Allison Frazier, as well as Dan Ballard, who is our Public Works Director, but he's also a landscape architect and has been longtime work in landscape and sustainability for the city. So, he'll talk more about the trees, and Allison will talk a little bit more about the civil engineering aspects. Allison, I think you're up first, right?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just want to mention a few things as a follow-up to what Councilman Mormon mentioned. We did look at adjusting the location of the sidewalk, and Dan will talk a little bit more about the impact to trees. Anything that we do along this section will impact the trees. The initial proposal that I presented to you, I think it was in June, was a two-foot green space and a five-foot sidewalk. The trees average about 10 and a half feet behind the back of curb, so it is possible that you could shift the sidewalk closer to the trees, but again, that would impact the trees as well. The comment regarding an alternate sidewalk material, we follow the public right-of-way accessibility guidelines, and those guidelines stipulate that walking surfaces shall be stable, firm, and slip-resistant. Our standards are concrete. With the exception of our parks, we use concrete or asphalt. Often, you'll see in our parks, say, Kiesel or Denny's Park, we use a crushed aggregate material or a fine stone, but those are not classified as sidewalks. So, I think anything we do along this portion of East University Drive in the front of those Bradford pears would further damage those trees, and Dan can talk a little bit more about the risk assessment that he's done to those trees, and if we move closer to those trees, what those impacts and the acceleration of the risk would be.
Thank you, Allison. I'm sure we'll have some questions. Mr. Ballard?
Mayor, council, good evening. Yeah, so there are seven Bradford pears located along the back of curb, so as Allison stated, they're all roughly 10 and a half feet from back of curb. Those Bradford pears were planted sometime, it looks like, in the mid-'90s. We don't have records exactly when they were planted, but Bradford pears typically have a lifespan of 20 to 30 years. Now, all of these trees already exhibit signs of decline, so all of the trees, all seven, already have exhibited patterns of overly mature trees, so they're self-pruning. We've already had branches dropping from some. Three have been previously hit by vehicles. One is currently scheduled for removal now, based off of our risk assessments, and we follow International Society of Arboreticultural Standards to perform risk assessments, and yeah, those warranted the removal of one already. We would anticipate removal of the others in the not-too-distant future, again, with or without the sidewalk, just based off of the tree species and longevity you expect to get out of them. Construction of the sidewalk absolutely would impact critical root zone. It would not be good for the trees. So, the sidewalk at a minimum would be five to seven feet from the back of curb, seven feet with a beauty strip. The grading operations would definitely damage the critical roots under the trees.
Thank you, Dan. Anything you want to follow up with? Okay, so, council, is there any questions or comments that y'all have, y'all might have, for either Ms. Frazier, Mr. Ballard, or the city manager?
I have a couple.
Sure, please.
What is our right-of-way, what's from the curb to the, off the curb? What is our right-of-way there?
I think it's about 10 feet. We haven't actually done a full survey, boundary survey, but it's typically about 10 to 12 feet behind the curb.
So, these trees could potentially exist in our right-of-way as it stands?
We believe the trees, a lot of people have been out there measuring, which is a little different than surveying, but they're, all the devices they've used, everybody believes they are on the city's property.
Correct. Based off our field measurements, we believe they are in-city right-of-way. They are city trees.
Okay. If we've already had at least two vehicles strike these trees, and we are considering placing a sidewalk where we're encouraging pedestrian use, are we not inviting a farther dangerous situation if a vehicle were to leave the road and strike a pedestrian who might be on the sidewalk that we installed?
The curvature of this section of East University Drive is common to other sections of East University Drive. I think the thing that's a little bit different here is just the topography and the speeds people come around that curve, but this curve is not unique to any of our streets.
But the topography and the speeds are what, are different?
I would think it's driver behavior. Yes.
Thank you.
What possibilities exist for any type of signage that can reduce the speed in that area, or painting of the side of the road, or any type of warning that this section of East University is cause for extra concern for drivers?
I believe there's a limited visibility sign, just out of view of this picture, as you approach the crest of that hill, but that would be the typical signage that we do when there's limited visibility. We put one up recently on, I think, on Drake over near Sanders.
Do we have the option to add more, or further augment what is already there?
If it's, if it's not consistent, it should be consistent with the manual that we follow, the federal manual, but it's definitely something we can look at.
There are those yellow signs that have an arrow kind of showing curve. There's been a lot of questions about that. One of our challenges, too, is while it is our right-of-way, people don't love the signs in their yard, so I'll use Sanford and Moores Mill as an example, where I've been asked for a lot of solutions by the homeowner, who is not, who's not the current tenant, but both have asked, and they don't want a big yellow sign right in their front yard that has an arrow pointing in either direction. So, you know, we can certainly look at any additional things. I think we're back to a number of areas where we struggle, that driver behavior, and in the instances where the cars are flipping out there, going extremely fast, way too fast for the conditions, we have lots of signage out in the area, and these tend to be, I don't know that they've all happened at night, but I know two of them have, that have happened a little later at night, when there's been less traffic in the area. When there's more traffic, it does slow people down in a good way.
Is this area within the school zone, they're supposed to slow through here to, do you slow to 25 through here?
I think so.
Okay. During, during the school peak hours, I guess, only, that's, okay.
I'd like to get, ask another question about the trees. You say that, as far as you can tell, they were planted in the '90s, they have a 30-year life, so they're fast approaching the end of their life. In the course of city operations, when you remove a tree, are you obligated to return a tree, and new planting?
We're not obligated to, no.
And my other key thing is, we would not typically plant a Bradford pear for any reason.
That's correct. So, Bradford pears are not native. They're actually listed on the Alabama Exotic Invasive Species List. So, no, it is not typically a tree that we would recommend planting either.
So, reasonably, we could expect that those trees will be gone regardless of any kind of decision that happens here by 2030?
Correct. Based off of the tree species and the average longevity of that tree, the viability of those trees, yes.
And we could also anticipate that there will be children walking, trying to get to the high school at 2030?
Correct.
I would say this, we're dealing with this in neighborhoods across the city. We've dealt with it on Payne Street and many other places, is we don't tend to remove trees unless they're a hazard, because neighborhoods often don't like that. So, if it, you know, exceeds its generally practiced lifespan, it doesn't mean we're going to come in and remove it unless it is a hazard. If we think it's got any danger whatsoever, then that's different. You do an assessment right now.
That's correct. So, we perform risk-based removals. So, when we perform an ISA risk assessment, we are performing removals for those that warrant removal based off of the risk that we have evaluated.
That eighth tree there, if you count them, is actually a telephone pole, and the house that we can see there, and the house on the other side of that driveway, the residents have indicated that the telephone pole has been broken more than once. So, I can't personally confirm that. Maybe somebody else can, but that is their story. The, just for what it's worth, the residents along here are either ambivalent or very firmly against a sidewalk. Obviously, the reason that this house would be against a sidewalk is the, what we've talked about tonight, and then other residents along this route have expressed sentiment against a sidewalk as well, for different reasons. But I guess, in looking for solutions here, one of the things that has occurred to me is that maybe we could advise on a species of tree to be planted just outside the right-of-way into this residence yard, just as a suggestion, in some species that would be suitable and long living. That's just one possible solution. And then a sidewalk could be constructed, I think, and that if we didn't take the trees down right away, possibly the second planting would have enough head start to survive and do the job that these trees are currently doing. And then we could build a sidewalk. I'm just thinking out loud with the help of the rest of the council and staff.
Isn't there a sidewalk on the other side of the street?
Yes, sir.
And where is the crosswalk in relationship to this area?
There is no crosswalk.
There's a crosswalk at Sanford Avenue. That's just...
And so, how far is that from this area?
We had talked about that last time, Sonny, you knew off the top of your head, I think.
I think to get to Sanford is about as far as it is to get to McKinley. So, if you go left to McKinley, you could get to the crosswalk on Sanford, about the same distance, but then you have to walk along Sanford on that sidewalk to get to the high school. So, if you're going to come down Old Mill, it's going to be a little bit of a larger walk, but it's a big campus, you know, just to get across campus is a big walk. So, it's not a lot further to go to Sanford and use that crosswalk than it is. It is further, but not a ton further. And if you, of course, if you walk down Sanford, that would be some kind of a compromise.
But there is an existing option for someone to walk to school that is perceived as a safe route, correct?
Right. A little longer.
I mean, okay, but they're teenagers, so...
Yes. The Sanford intersection, the Sanford intersection has a pedestrian signal, which is what Megan was referring to. It is about 1,600 feet from Old Mill to Sanford.
As far as the trees go, I hope you won't cut me down when I get old. Just because I'm supposed to die around 70, don't I run, I get cut, my legs cut.
I have one other question about, if you go towards Glen Avenue, the next street to the left is a turning circle, right? It's a circle. I don't know the name of it.
There's, yes, it's a cul-de-sac.
It's a cul-de-sac, I should say.
Hillside.
Is there any opportunity to, for pedestrians to come through any kind of property in that cul-de-sac? Is there any option to have an easement in that area?
There's some water that, that is back there, and there may be some easements. Right now, it's not a pedestrian way. As a matter of fact, the mayor and I were talking about, I had just visited Fort Collins, Colorado, that has a lot of those. I was there over the weekend, and they have a lot of those, but we, by and large, do not have neighborhood connections for pedestrians only. That's something that can be explored, for sure, not something we could be on the ready for in the next six months. It would take a lot of work, because we'd have a lot of people walking through the backyards of folks, but it's certainly something we can explore.
I just, I just, I just see that this will be an ongoing issue for the residents in this particular portion of that neighborhood. This is not going away anytime soon. I don't think the problems of getting younger people across that street, I think, is just going to remain.
Anyone else?
They're all high school students, aren't they?
Yes, they're, they're all high school students. This is a, this is a difficult scenario. Obviously, we want our children who are walking to school to walk in the most safe manner possible, but to build a sidewalk here, you're going to compromise those trees very quickly, and there's a young family there that's, you know, has a young child, and there's, you know, and a couple of recent examples of cars leaving the road, and if it weren't for the trees, I don't know where they'd end up. My guess is down in their front yard somewhere. And they are very, you know, I've spoken to the father of the young man who lives here, and they're very concerned about if the trees were to go, what that does, kind of as far as compromising the safety of his son and his wife, his son's wife, and his granddaughters, I think it's granddaughter, that live there, might be grandson, I could be wrong. So, they're very concerned about the trees being compromised and then that being open and cars ending up in their front yard.
What opportunity might exist for some type of barrier, be it a bollard, or a number of bollards, or, or some kind of protective barrier?
Again, we had vetted and looked, you know, lightly, whether it's warranted or not, the city engineer would need to speak to, but it was a little bit of a light discussion about that being, again, it's in the city's right-of-way, but in smack dab in somebody's front yard, and it's not their front yard, per se, it's our property, but they mow the grass very nicely right there. So, Allison, do you want to address when we do put guardrail type things, bollards and/or concrete walls, or Jersey barriers?
Yeah, typically, those types of protective measures are for vehicles, to keep vehicles within the roadway, like a guardrail. Bollards are more for, we've used them in a few instances, around the goalpost is where I can think of, and that was to protect the sign. We don't use them usually in an instance of protecting vehicles from leaving the roadway. That's not an application we would recommend.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts in the council? So, if not, we need to make a decision. We can either, you know, end this conversation now, which I think is, we will continue to watch this scenario as it evolves and, and look for opportunities to improve this intersection, and take no action, or we can ask the city manager on an upcoming agenda to put a resolution that would create a need and an approval to build a new sidewalk in this area. So, it's up to the council as to what we need to do here. So, this is part of our process, how we handle new business. I'd like to hear from the council what y'all's wishes are.
I liked, I liked Bob's, yes, I wouldn't necessarily call it a suggestion, but that, the idea about exploring neighborhood connectors through, sorry, through different right-of-ways. Not sure what, what would the timeframe look on that, Megan? I know, just, just off of us having an idea of whether or not that's something that would be feasible in an instance like this.
We just have to study. I had lightly looked. There's drainage easements and some other things. Some may not be easements. Some of the staff may be looking right now at that. And you're talking, some of it to, I think, off of McKinley and other ways that connect all the way back through. There's a few different things we can look. I mean, a light look is just a staff analysis. I don't, if any of the property owners in that area are listening, I don't want to scare anybody. We would just be taking a light look to see, and then our next step would be, how many properties does that involve, and what would the appetite of the property owners be to work with us on that? And we're certainly happy to evaluate that, but I think it would be, based on current workload, it would just be whether or not you guys want us to reprioritize some other things that we're working on to... some other things that we're working on to move this to the forefront. If we don't, it'll be a six-plus-month process to get real solid information to you, not initial information. But it'll take us a bit of time. Because we have to take a hard look. Could we design this? Is it passable? What about lighting? What about? You know, there's a lot that would go into that. And let alone, we'll have to go to private property owners and ask them to work with us. But something we can certainly explore.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I'm a little reluctant to let this go without any kind of forward direction. I know I can speak from a public safety point of view, and I know Chief Dawson could as well. There is nothing worse than, in our line of work, showing up to something horrible that has occurred with a pedestrian versus a vehicle. And I don't see this problem resolving itself unless we intervene in some way. I'm open to any way that, you know, reduces the risk of somebody in the public, particularly our kids, getting hurt or worse. So, that's kind of where I am with it.
Anybody like to add to what Bob just said?
Yeah, I would concur with you, Mr. Parsons, on that. I think we need to, it's not a, we're trading, a couple of safety issues here, obviously, with putting a sidewalk there. If there's an alternative, we can explore. I mean, I would be in favor of doing that, especially, I mean, I've thought all along, if there was a way to get to McKinley through the neighborhood in some safe way, I think that solves a lot of problems in regards to this. I just think, I would be in favor of exploring that a little further as well.
And I agree with both of you guys. I think whatever, depending on our decision, we don't need to give up on this. We need to stay mindful of it and continue to look for opportunities. Our specific charge tonight is, do we want to move forward with the staff putting an item on our future agenda that asks us to approve or not approve a sidewalk that would stretch from Old Mill up to McKinley? Do we want to do that, or do we not want to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I'm afraid a sidewalk would be dangerous to walkers as well as the residents along here. So, if we come up with a better solution, I think that would be great. And I think we should look for one, as has been indicated.
Thank you, Sonny. Anyone else?
I agree. I think a sidewalk is, I don't know if that's the right answer in this area. I think we need to explore other options, hopefully, if we can find a better solution here.
Okay.
I have one more question, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, to Allison. How, I don't know how to ask my question, so bear with me. When we talk about road barriers, metal barriers that you'll see, that, you know, the standard, you know, two-and-a-half-feet-high barrier, pressed tin, pressed metal of some kind, is there an opportunity to place that before a pedestrian, before a sidewalk? So that it goes next to the bike lane and then the sidewalk occurs? If that made any sense.
You're just trying to say, guardrail back a curb, then sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, there, and I'm trying to think of a way to answer your question that makes sense. There are, there's criteria for warranting guardrail. And again, usually, it's for vehicles. But it's definitely something I can look and see if the regs would support that being protection, which is what I think you're asking for pedestrians on the backside.
Yes.
I would not want to give the false impression, though, that that would protect someone completely because it's made to deflect and to bend. But it's also made to direct cars back into the travelway. But I can definitely look in the guidelines to see if that's a permissible use regardless.
I wonder if we might be able to extend this conversation a little longer before we do make a decision, either thumbs up or thumbs down on a sidewalk?
Would you be asking us to, at the next meeting or maybe the second meeting in October, to continue this conversation? Is that what you're referring to, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Megan, the practical side of the staff having time to kind of empty the toolbox and look at some of these opportunities and see some of these ideas that we've come up with. What's, you mentioned six months to go back and look at a connection maybe to that cul-de-sac that y'all named a while ago, and I forgot the name of it. But to look at some of these other types of solutions, is that something reasonably good?
I can tell you, we've generally vetted guardrails, all kinds of things. We've been on this conversation for nearly, I don't know, six to 12 months now. And so, we've looked roughly at all of those things and haven't determined. Is that outside? Will? Okay. And, you know, we haven't found a solution. We're happy to keep looking. I would rather not give you a date certain. We're not going to take till Christmas. But I'd rather just take a little bit of time to vet. I don't want to scare the property owners that live off of Carter Street and some other things about some drainage ways that look like possibly there could be. I want to, you know, be very transparent that we'll take a quick look at that. That doesn't take six months. What would take six months is taking a hard look at it. So, I'd rather come back to you in an interim before we spend too much time and say what we think our challenges are. And if there's anything else we can do, I do think the decision before you ultimately is going to be, other than what Councilman Parsons mentioned, it's build a sidewalk or not build a sidewalk. And I'll remind you that a sidewalk was built on the other side of the street with great intention at the time the high school was built. I'll also acknowledge that you're going to be looking through nine through 12 coming up, not 10 through 12 at this high school as a new high school comes on the line toward the end of the decade. But that does buy us a little bit of time. It doesn't help the now. But we also need to look at a greater connection. The city engineer has some heartburn about stopping the sidewalk just at McKinley. But we would need to work handily with Auburn University and others. If you continued it to Glen, I mean, it's kind of a sidewalk in the middle of nowhere. And then it wouldn't go from Old Mill back to Sanford. I mean, we haven't had a chance to look at a greater project either because this one cropped up. I don't believe, we've talked about pedestrian bridges. We've talked about pedestrian underpasses. We've done all of that, underpasses. Allison would kill me. They don't drain. And overhead is nearly impossible because it's residential right there. So, we're pretty much talking about a sidewalk or a sidewalk or some sort of back trail.
Was the sight distance at, if you remember, the sight distance issues at Hillside and McKinley. I do have some sight distance concerns. So, even if we look at alternate methods, they still have to cross somewhere.
And crossing without a crossing guard is problematic, yes. This hadn't been our other reason to stop. But we don't want to stripe a crosswalk, a random crosswalk in the middle of East University Drive where people aren't expecting it. And limited sight distance is not a wise decision for when we don't have a crossing guard there.
Is there a crossing guard there now?
There is, and that is why we, yeah. If we're going to do this, it would go to McKinley, and there would not be a striped crosswalk. You wait on the crossing guard.
Primary role is to allow the buses in and out, but.
Yeah, and I'll remind you that that was not supposed to be anything but a bus entrance at the time the high school was built. That's what we planned everything around. It wasn't really supposed to be for pedestrians, and it wasn't really supposed to be for vehicles. It was supposed to be buses.
If I might add, that is not a public safety employee at that entrance. That's private security.
Private security.
Hired by the school.
Is that what, is that what all the crossing guards are that I say in the morning? Or?
No, we staffed many of the school crossings, but not that particular one. Again, because that was not the original intended use.
Okay, so, let me try to put a bow on this. Y'all tell me if I'm wrong. I'm sensing that there's not a majority that wants to move forward with asking the staff to put a resolution on an upcoming agenda to build a sidewalk. But I believe we all believe that we need to continue to be looking for options to provide a safe pathway for these children that are pedestrians to get to the school, knowing that in the future, we're going to have younger, even a younger class of students. It will be more than likely, potentially, more walkers going to that campus. But it's very important for us to stay on top of that and continue to look for solutions. Is that fair? Is that good with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Same.
All right, we are adjourned the committee of the whole, and it is after 6 o'clock. So, we'll go ahead and start with our council meeting. I want to welcome everybody to the Auburn City Council meeting for September the 17th, 2024. Welcome everybody who's joining us live, certainly those that are watching us through the streaming on YouTube and Facebook and those that are listening on WNI. Welcome to tonight's meeting at this point in time. We'll ask Lindsey to call the roll.
Adams?
Here.
Coblins?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Griswold? Mormon?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Anne?
Here. Would you please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Tonight during the committee of the whole, we made a number of appointments. The city council reappointed Auburn University President Chris Roberts and former Auburn University President Jay Gooch to the Industrial Development Board. The city council also reappointed Lee County Sheriff Jay Jones to the Lee County Youth Development Center. For the last few minutes, we've had a discussion about a proposal of a sidewalk along East University Drive from Old Mill to McKinley. Ultimately, the city council is not going to move forward at this time with asking the staff to add an agenda item, a resolution that would include either approving or not approving a sidewalk. But we are saying out loud to our community and to those involved that we want to continue to look for good, safe solutions for our young people to get back and forth to Auburn High's campus. As far as announcements tonight, my friends from SGA are here. I want to tell them thank you. It was a great time yesterday morning with Mokas with the mayor and had a great time on campus. What a beautiful morning at Auburn University. And I appreciate all the students that came by and spent a lot of time visiting and very proud of our students at Auburn University and proud of our engagement and proud of our work together. And thank y'all for y'all's hard work to make that event happen. Today, I got to have some fun with Opelika Mayor Gary Fuller as he paid off his debt for the Auburn High Tigers beating Opelika Bulldogs a couple of weeks ago. And he took me to lunch, and I appreciate Gary Fuller being a good sport. And certainly, congratulations to the Auburn High football team for winning a great game against Opelika. And they're having a great season, undefeated. Beat the number-two team in the state last weekend, and we're very proud of them, as are the Lee Scott Warriors, who are currently undefeated as well. High school football is going really well. I want to thank all the folks from our economic development, in fact, our industrial development team, working with GE Aerospace for a great tailgate this past Saturday before the homecoming game against New Mexico. We're very proud to be the home of GE Aerospace and look forward to all their new technology and new additions to our city here in the future. Speaking of Auburn University, I was asked to participate in the homecoming pep rally last Friday and was able to speak to the crowd there. I'm not going to take credit for the great victory for the Tigers on Saturday afternoon, but it was a great crowd. We hope everybody had a great time at homecoming. We welcome our alums back to their community. And it was a great weekend, and we look forward to the next two weekends with Arkansas and Oklahoma coming to Auburn. Last week was a, myself and the mayor pro tem attended a dinner at the Gooch Performing Arts Center as they kicked off a fundraising effort to improve the Gooch Performing Arts Center with a focus on the new amphitheater. It was a wonderful evening with a lot of great food and great camaraderie and just continue to be thankful for everything that the Gooch Performing Arts Center means to our community and all the enjoyment that so many of us have at the Gooch Performing Arts Center. I want to thank St. Michael's Catholic Church for hosting the Blue Mass on 9/11. They recognize our first responders every year by holding a mass. And I appreciate their recognition of those people who protect us every day and their recognition of that poignant date in our country's history, 9/11. I appreciate that. And there were another, a number of other entities in our community that recognized our first responders and our public safety officials. And certainly, I appreciate all of those people who did that. This past week, the Southeastern Tourism Association had their annual conference in Auburn. This is a conference that has normally been in other cities across the southeast. And there was almost 300 visitors here in our community for about 72 hours. And we're grateful to have those people being a part of Auburn. And I want to say congratulations to Larry and all the folks at Country's Barbecue. For a long, long time, that building has sat out there on Opelika Road. And he has built a new building, and he's got it open. And we look forward to cutting his ribbon in the near future. And I appreciate Larry reinvesting in our community and reinvesting right there on Opelika Road. He is one of our longest-tenured businesses on Opelika Road. And we appreciate him staying with us and build a new building and look forward to his success. Anyone else?
I have a couple.
Please.
I just would like to thank the Auburn Chamber for having me come out to an Auburn Young Professionals luncheon to impart a bit of knowledge about what it means to serve on the city council. So, thank you to the Chamber for that invitation. And then I would like to extend a big happy birthday for this week to our very own Max, who turns a big number this week. I'm not telling him that, whether that is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Happy birthday, Max.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Tell us how old you are, if you want to.
I'll let you guess.
Okay. Anyone else on the council have an announcement they'd like to make? Anyone?
Sir, I sent each of you a letter from one of my constituents before the meeting. I encourage you to read it. He had some interaction with our Public Safety Department. Things went very well, and we have a great bunch of people working for us. Like, I think Director Matthews for the job he does with his folks. And it's a touching letter, so I would ask that each of you take time to read it today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward with Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon, y'all. Thank you for having me. Last Saturday, during halftime of the football game against the University of New Mexico, Helen Talmage was named Miss Homecoming. Helen is the president of ADP. She's been actively involved on campus as a Campore Eagle counselor and a student recruiter. Her slogan was "At the Table with Talmage." And as a dietetic student, her platform is focused on addressing food insecurity, fostering fellowship through shared meals, and educating others about the importance of proper nutrition. We're incredibly proud of Helen and all the candidates who took part in campaign season. There were nearly 10,000 votes cast, so a lot of participation that we're really thrilled about. Also, wanted to extend a thank you for joining us, like you mentioned, at the Mokas with the mayor. I think it was a really great time having students come out, get a chance to chat with you. I know we and SGA certainly did. And we're already chatting about ways to get you back on campus soon. So, keep you updated about that. Our external affairs team recently finished interviews for Lobby Board, which is a student-run organization through the SGA. It focuses on lobbying state senators and representatives for expansions to the Education Trust Fund. It's a really great time. We talk about all types of events going on in the community and nationally as well. And with election season coming up, I'm sure it'll be really exciting. On a different note, I wanted to share some recent data from the census report that came out last week. Auburn's enrollment has reached an all-time high of 34,195 students. And our one-year retention rate is 95%, and our six-year graduation rate is at 85%, which are both all-time highs for the university. So, really proud about that. One more thing I wanted to mention that our students are excited about is printing. I know that sounds kind of odd, but I think you'd be surprised how difficult it can be to get all the printers standardized across the university. That was one of the big issues that our SGA exec team took on this year, and they've already almost got it finished. So, it's been really great. Everywhere you go, the printers are the same and is a huge quality of life improvement for our students. So, thank you, guys, for having me and War Eagle.
War Eagle. Thank you. Thank you again for yesterday morning. Okay. At this time, we'll open it up for citizens communications on items on tonight's agenda. Remember, this is only items that are being considered on tonight's agenda. There are a couple of items that have public hearings attached to those. If you'd like to speak to the city council about any of those, we would ask that you wait until that comes up during our time here. But if you'd like to speak to the council about anything on the agenda, please come forward. Just ask that you give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Yep.
All right. Hello, mayor, council people, council members. My name is Chuck Hemmard. I live at 315 Lee Road 25, also known as Hillendale Drive. You'll be hearing my case about the Hemmard annexation that you've already heard once when Megan introduces it here in a minute. I'll just summarize. It's 4.45 acres, one lot of record that we're hoping to put in the city so my daughter can access city schools. The planning commission initially this summer recommended approval, but of course, that was postponed due to allowing the planning staff to inform the council. I believe I've heard that you guys have now met about the 2024 updates proposed to the city's comprehensive plan. So, just wanted to say a few things in case it might help my case out. to say a few things in case it might help my case out. And first, a little, I'm going to try to make it through here. First, a little personal history. I started my 17th year at the university. I'm currently the Chair of the Department of Art and Art History. I am a studio art professor, teaches photography. My wife is a CPA. She's been working for 17 years doing that. She works at Matchin, doing a state and trust work. Mostly, she's tax manager there. She leads a Girl Scout troop. Shout out to Troop 7719. So, my daughter is, I believe, the only girl in the troop that's not in the city right now, but they meet at the hut over there by Frank Brown. So, we bought this land in 2015, and I've been sort of watching how annexations work since that time and trying to inform myself about the process. But it seems like between Planning Commission and the City Council, there's always those who seem to support what the planning staff policies sort of recommend in regard to these optimal boundary decisions. Now, the Planning Department is sort of recommending, including Hillendale Drive, the street that my house is located on, at least the properties in the city. But in case any of you are still undecided, I know it's been lumped in with four other or three other cases, but I'd like to point out a few things that highlight a few things that make my case unique. I understood that there might have been some concern about whether or not I did some kinds, because of the shape of my lot, some kind of administrative subdivision or something to either, I don't want to say skirt, or somehow work with guidelines to give myself an advantage there, but I just want to shed a light, excuse me, a light on the history of why the lot was divided the way it was. So, we moved my mother here, well, we purchased land in 2025. We moved my mother here in 2018, and the house that has the red circle on it is the house we built for my mother in 2019. Unfortunately, she passed a little over a year ago, sort of unexpectedly. And as we were looking to build our house, which was in 2020, I believe, or 2021 by the time we finished it, we, of course, wanted to share that driveway, and we had a lien on our larger parcel of land, so for us to get a construction loan, we had to break out and release from that lien this 4.45 acres. And so, it made sense to put that post down alongside that driveway and connect it where it did. The properties that you see around there that are all green are in the city. The ones that are to the west across Hillendale, those are four homes that Michael Allen, Michael Monk built. That parcel was 12 acres or whatever it was, was not in the city at the time we did our subdivision. I'll just say that. So, it wasn't like we saw that and said, oh, we can connect over here or something like that. It's just the way it kind of worked out. So, we selected, I did the topo maps. You can see, we built our house on the hilltop. We're about 175 feet beyond the optimal boundary. So, I do own the lot to the north. That's under your consideration now, and the surrounding lots as well, I guess, if you go to the next slide. One thing I'd like to point out is our 4.45 acre lot cannot be subdivided because there's a three-acre lot minimum in rural zoning, and that's just the way it worked out. So, by putting my parcel in the city, I can't subdivide. I have no intentions to develop the property any further, the larger parcel of land. Yeah, we envisioned a sort of relatively small-scale, what I'd like to call an ecological restoration project. I do prescribe burning. I'm interested in longleaf pine trees and native ecosystems. So, I named it Fall Line Hills. That's why I have this map on there for you so you can see the name. That is factually the geographic province on which this land sits, and so, that's our intention there. As far as the unimproved road goes, I know that's been an issue that's been discussed. As far, I don't know how the city and county will work that out. That seems to be a topic to be discussed, but as far as roads currently served by this, there's 12 that are currently in the city, including one that's currently about to be finished, and about, let's see, five that are not. So, there's already a majority that are in the city.
Thank you.
And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Sure.
Okay. We'll move ahead. City Managers' Communications.
Mayor, under City Managers' Communications, I have the announcement of three vacancies on the Tree Commission for terms that begin November 8th and end November 7th, 2027. The appointments will be made at the October 15th meeting. Our first item of business is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
To move.
I have motions. There are second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the Consent Agenda is approved. Ordnances.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A1 is a request from Chuck and Jessica Hemard to annex approximately 4.45 acres of property located at 315 Lee Road 25, also known as Hillendale Drive, which is located outside the optimal boundary as it stands today. The Planning Commission failed to recommend approval of this annexation by a vote of three to five at its July 11th meeting. This item was postponed from the July 16th City Council meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion. Seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this this evening? All right. Seeing and hearing none. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Hemard had a map up just a few minutes ago, and I think I understand that everything that was in reddish pink is his property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, it surrounds this 4.45 acres. In total, can I ask how many acres that is?
Thirty-seven.
Thank you.
And the request before you is just for the 4.45. Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just say, I can't really add much that Mr. Hemard didn't already address in his presentation, and so, I do support this annexation. I believe it's isolated here. I know we got conditions on the road there that we've discussed many times, but I do support this. I believe that we should annex this property in.
Ms. Crouch, what is the circumstance with the road? It's a dirt road up there, out there. How will that decision be made, and does?
Well, we, the county is going to say fairly soon, the more property you annex along this road, they're going to say, guess what, City of Auburn, per state law, you own this road. It's a dirt road which needs to be scraped on a regular basis to keep it maintained. And the residents that are already in the city limits on this road regularly ask for us to pave the road. You have other roads in the city where residents are requesting the same. One challenge that we have is when you go out on the fringe, the city never said at any point in time we would ever pave your road. That's up to you, but in priorities, people are choosing to buy and build houses off of a dirt road and often off of a long flag driveway that is dirt, that is a private driveway. And so, it's up to the City Council, but I can say maintenance is more problematic on dirt roads than it is once they are paved. Yes, it's more expensive to pave them, but it's more labor-intensive to maintain dirt roads from a scraping standpoint.
And this road's currently in the county?
Correct. The county currently.
And the county maintains it right now? And what will be the tipping point?
City Engineer Frazier.
Our tipping point is having majority city property on both sides of a road for a majority of a section.
So, you just saw a section of Beehive Road is now ours because the city's on both sides of that road. You'll see that, but we don't own the entirety of Lee Road 10 or Beehive Road because we're not on both sides. But we will, once we permeate both sides in certain distances, and the further south you get on this road, we're going to end up with the whole road.
Will these two proposed annexations before us that are on Hillendale, would annexing both of those in put us over the tipping point as of like today or as of when the annexation takes place?
And I was trying to pull the map up. Typically, the county engineer, and I look at those annually, we look at the annexations and then look at where we have acquired more property along the county road, and then the county engineer and I just meet and decide if it has exceeded the tipping point, if you will.
Okay.
Has this road been discussed? Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was trying to look at the map before I responded. This road has not been discussed. However, the county engineer offers us roads all the time, and I keep telling no on this one.
I do expect that you're going to start seeing this, based on discussions the council and Planning Commission have had, that you're going to start seeing more information from the staff about this on annexations. And every border of the city, you know, you're being pushed on annexations, and dirt roads are going to be more and more. But even if it's a paved road, there is sometimes a deal where the county contributes toward its resurfacing if it's not in good condition and so on before we take it over, but once we take it over, it is ours. Yep.
Are we compelled at any time to immediately take it over and improve, or is there?
It's not immediate. Again, we usually do it annually, and then the resolution actually comes to you for acceptance, and the county engineer does a similar action with the county commission to remove it from their maintenance limits.
State law is pretty clear on how it should happen. We have, you know, a county that is an excellent partner that we work with to do this on a routine basis, on an annual basis, but they could push for it more often than they do.
The reality is, we have a lot of roads in Auburn that we already own that we have to improve, and our citizens expect us to work on on an annual basis. If the City Council were to approve this tonight, I mean, I think we have to say to the citizens that live in this area not to expect us to be out there in the next four months with a scraper and a bulldozer getting your road paved. I mean, that's just the reality of the situation.
I have a question probably for the Planning Department. This made its way to us with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Department, correct?
It did.
And with the idea that adjustments to our optimal boundary in the near future would bring this property within our optimal boundary?
Very quickly, though, some of that was based on previous annexation activity by this body. That is what drove that decision. You got below the optimal boundary with a recent annexation where we recommended denial. And so, as you get below the optimal boundary and the council continues to annex properties below the optimal boundary, is that is what will cause staff to take a harder look and say, if the council is doing this, maybe we need to extend the optimal boundary. That was the reason for the recommendation.
Correct. Thank you.
That area is growing out there by leaps and bounds, and I think we need it in the city limits while we can still have something to say about what's put out there in that area. The gentleman made a good case for wanting to come into city limits. He is putting four acres, a four-acre lot in there. It's not like he's trying to put a quarter-acre lot in there or something, so I think it needs to be added to the city limits. I'm in favor of annexation.
Anyone else?
I'm just going to make a comment. Because this is technically outside the optimal boundary, and it's been my, I have held to that, that if it's outside the optimal boundary, that I would vote no on annexations outside optimal boundary. And I know that we just recently had a work session, and that is upcoming, but on a technicality, this is still outside the optimal boundary. So, for the next four annexations requests, you'll hear me vote no, and that's not a reflection on anybody who has the applicant in front of us. I wish you well, and I hope that you do great things if it's approved, but that's just my theory on things outside the optimal boundary. We have, we do not have significant services to places that we've annexed currently on the edges of town outside the optimal boundary, and I get calls on a daily basis from constituents who are second property owners of things that have been annexed, even though the original owner who annexed signed a petition attesting that all services, that doesn't carry on to the next person. So, these are unintended consequences that happen and continue on when we make these decisions. So, for that, I'll be voting no.
Anyone else?
When might we vote on optimal boundary movement?
I have to go to the Planning Commission first.
Yeah, so the intention is to bring that to the Planning Commission in the October Planning Commission meeting. And so, once we get feedback from the Planning Commission, then we're able to publish the changes, then we'll bring that to y'all at the following meeting.
It would be, but due to advertising, it could be like your second meeting in November. Depends on how the dates fall. Might be sooner, but yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
Can you walk us through, in the event that this is denied tonight, what options does the homeowner have in the future should the optimal boundary be adjusted? What timeline can they reapply?
So, annexations are unlike other applications have, I guess, essentially like a year-long where they have to come back and wait. On this one, annexations, I mean, you're free to just, once you get denied, you can come back and apply again. I mean, that's how other annexations have gotten in on Hillendale. And I guess, kind of, with this one, they'd just be able to apply again, I guess, without kind of getting too personal on what their different options would be.
Across the road is in the city limits now, am I right?
Below the optimal boundary that you guys had quite a discussion about. Correct. Now, some across the road is in, and some was above the optimal boundary and some is below. His parcel is quite large. His overall property, should I say?
Some of Mr. Hemard's property is in the optimal boundary. If he wasn't administratively split, it would, some would be in and some would be.
I believe so.
This particular parcel is out, if I read that map right.
Okay. We ready to vote? Okay, Lindsey, roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblins?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
No.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Item 9A2 is a request from Matthew Chase Hamario to annex approximately 14.84 acres of property located at 660 Lee Road 25, also known as Hillendale Drive. The Planning Commission recommended denial of this request by a vote of six to two at its August 8th meeting. This item was postponed from the August 20th City Council meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. I have a motion. Seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none. Any discussion? Questions?
Kind of falls along the same conversation that we've just had regarding the optimal boundary. I think that's the discussion that kind of take place with all four of these. So, I don't have any further comments regarding this, but I'm, you know, happy for the rest of the council to discuss if they'd like to.
Anyone have a question? Any questions?
I feel that somebody in Max feels about it. I think he puts it very well.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Coblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 9A3 is a request from Leslie Simonton to annex approximately 5.21 acres of property located at 812 Lee Road 415, also known as Winterhawk Drive. Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this request by a vote of two to six at its August 8th meeting. The item was postponed from the August 20th City Council meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion. Seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward to vote on this this evening? Hearing none. Any comments or questions?
Again, I did want to point out, Winterhawk, this, I think the optimal boundary that the planning staff recommended extend would kind of, currently, it cuts to the middle of this neighborhood. It would extend it to Lee Road 27, if you look on the map. It would take it out to basically include this neighborhood or most of the lots in this neighborhood, if I remember the map correctly. Yeah, Winterhawk is paved, so we don't have an issue as far as road construction or taking on anything there. So, considering those, I would support this one, and it kind of goes along, again, with the number four on our item, on our agenda items. You know, these are both kind of lots that are right there next to each other. So, I would support that based on what the new optimal boundary would be and knowing that maintenance, road maintenance is not an issue necessarily in this area.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Lindsey?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblins?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 9A4 is a request by Justin Shepherd to annex approximately 3.7 acres of property located at 261 Lee Road 415, also known as Winterhawk Drive. The Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this request by a vote of two to six at its August 8th meeting. Approval of this annexation is contingent upon the Simonton property that you just annexed in order for the applicant to be contiguous to the Auburn city limits. This item was postponed from the August 20th City Council meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
I have a motion. Seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none. Any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey?
Mormon?
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblins?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Motion carries. Item 985 is a request from Amanda and Andrew Kimball to annex approximately 6.03 acres of property located at 3743 Lee Road 146, also known as Moores Mill Road. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its September 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Have a motion to second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Seeing and hearing none, any comments or questions?
Don't believe this one has any optimal boundary implications, so I know we've been...
It's much closer in, yeah.
It's much closer in. It's nothing that's, it's within Society Hill Road, kind of in between Society Hill and Ogle Tree, I believe. So this is well within the optimal boundary. I just want to clarify that, since we've been on that topic tonight.
Yeah, and it does say in our notes that the county will maintain, continue to maintain this piece of the road. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey?
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 986 is a request from Mitchell Triple D Farm LLC to annex approximately 127.32 acres of property in the optimal boundary located on Lee Road 146, also known as Moores Mill Road, approximately a half mile east of Society Hill Road. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its September 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion to second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Seeing and hearing none, any comments or questions?
I, I'd like to ask a question on that one.
Please, go ahead.
Because on the other annexations, I see, you know, we, we talking about four, maybe 14 acres of property, but this one is talking about 127 acres. So this is a property that's going to be developed, or?
Yes, it's going to be developed. There's actually more acreage to the north of it that will likely eventually come in, but this is their first phase. They've been meeting with staff for some time on this and working through a ton of details. You also passed a development agreement relative to this annexation during your consent agenda that limits the number of lots in the first two years. It's no more than 10 houses in essence per year can they build for the first several years as we wait for the Moores Mill and Society Hill roundabout to be constructed by the county. And the developers worked with us on every aspect of that and has been willing to execute the development agreement, and they've been good discussions.
But this is not going to be commercial development?
No, ma'am. It's three acre-ish residential lots right now. There's a, you know, they've got several ideas for a plan, but yes, it's a large lot subdivision at this stage, in this phase.
Then the recommendation, the development agreement, if I remember, was approximately 10 houses a year. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's allow for, for traffic, uh, obviously. If that roundabout's complete, does that take away that requirement, I guess, of 10 houses a year? Is whichever one, is it a time, time 2026 or whatever, or, or the roundabout completion, which, whichever comes first? Is that how it reads?
So according to the county engineer, their anticipation is to get this under construction with this year so that it would be completed by '26. So that's what we put the timeframe in there to run through the calendar year '26, or, or when the, the roundabout is completed.
So I remind you, this is, is unusual, but you'll see more of this with large lot subdivisions where if, if a planned development district overlay or some other trigger isn't coming for a development agreement, we're doing this now at annexation. And so you may see a shift in a development agreement over time if they do the larger project, um, where we may shift the development agreement into something else, but we're just not, not there yet. But again, I think the council likes to know, nothing has been dropped on the staff whatsoever. They've been highly communicative and in numerous meetings, working through all the details.
Thank you.
Senator?
Similar question. Um, it'll come in as rural, and that will, uh, mean that it has to be three acres or more per home. There's also, uh, that, something mentioned in here about being in the watershed of Lake Ogle Tree. Will that also be another restriction on how much land is required per home?
Yes, so that also influences the lot size, but since it is rural, the, the lot minimum is the same. So there's a lot minimum of three acres for rural, lot minimum of three acres for Lake Ogle Tree watershed.
Right, so even if, um, it were rezoned, would the Lake Ogle Tree watershed requirement still be in place?
Yeah, so it cannot be rezoned, just kind of due to the future land use win. And so there is a mechanism for them to get smaller lot sizes with the conservation overlay, and so that's already approved kind of within the conservation subdivision regs, so they can get down to acre and a half lots. But like I said, that's still with the Lake Ogle Tree watershed, so that's the only way. It doesn't change the density. It'd still be the same number of lots that they would be able to have. With the rural designation, they just would be smaller. It'd be, it's essentially cluster development, uh, which is more sustainable, I guess, not having a greater amount of impervious surface in the Ogle Tree watershed. It would reduce the amount of impervious, impervious surface by reducing the lot sizes. And so that is the one mechanism they have, and they could reach that without rezoning. It's an option to them under the conservation subdivision regs currently.
That's correct. So the, the notion is they're not, they couldn't get any more houses with conservation overlay. You know, as the planning director is telling you, just clusters homes in certain areas. So, but it's only reducing to an acre and a half. You're not going to get one eighth acre lots out of this. That's not how this works, but it's same total number of units. It's where you place them on the property, thereby doing the same thing to protect the watershed.
That was my next question. So the, the number 31 would still be about approximately what they could expect to build? 31 residences?
Yeah, correct. So I guess 41, but yes.
Well, page five of seven, it says 31.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I guess kind of what they've submitted now, um, they have, there are several large lots that are greater than the three, um, but just kind of, just the quick math of 127 is about, about three. I mean, they can, it's 42 units essentially.
All right. Any other questions?
We, we anticipate a traffic study with this, uh, project.
Senator Fraser?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, good question. Any other questions? Okay, Lindsey?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblins?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 9B authorizes a zoning ordinance, ordinance text amendment to section 507.02, table 53 of the City of Auburn zoning ordinance, urban core district and design standards to expand ground floor commercial requirements for developments along South College Street and South Gay Street, south of Thatch Avenue. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its August 8th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion to second, seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. All right, seeing and hearing none. At this time, we'll open the public here.
Eric, real quick, does anybody have any questions before you open the public hearing? Is there...
Any questions? There might be some after the public here, correct?
Okay, just want to make sure.
We'll open the public here. If you'd like to address the city council on this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak to the city council.
Take it at that, but, um...
Subtract 10.
My name is Brian Worth. I live at 211 South Gay Street, and I wanted to just thank you guys for letting me have this opportunity to speak to the council, mayor, and the city staff. As y'all know, we are the one residential, um, house that falls within this ordinance, um, change. Our house is on the south side of Thatch, and so it's not, it does fall under the, no residential on the ground floor. And also, um, so my concern, and the concern I bring up for my wife and I, this is our residence. And if we were to ever have to do a major renovation to this house, and our family lives there, it's our home. If we were ever to, um, you know, change out windows, doors, there's fenestration requirements that have to be met because of this ordinance change. If we were to ever, you know, develop the backyard and make it an additional house instead of parking, because we no longer feel like we have to have one space per room at the hotel based on precedent set by this council with other developments, the way this is written and the grayness in this ordinance change, we feel like is not strong enough that we feel like you guys should approve this and vote yes, as it is written today, for the areas south of Thatch, from Thatch to Gay Street, um, on the east side of the street to Cassie. You know, in my conversations I've had with, um, the city staff, I know there is a requirement in there that the city manager has the ability to perform a waiver without it coming to council or planning commission. However, you know, city councils changes, planning commissioners change, mayors change, you know, that doesn't allow us the reassurance that we have that that would stay in place or intact for this ordinance change as it is. And just to be clear, I'm not saying some ordinance doesn't have to be developed for this area. I just feel, we feel like it's a gray area, and in one, it doesn't protect our home for what we have invested millions of dollars in this area along Gay Street with this city. You know, we, you know, in, so I am asking the staff that they do, or the council, that you do not approve this ordinance as it is written today. There are, you know, there are certain stakeholders along Gay Street that have not had any input on how this is written for an amendment. I agree that we don't want what has happened at the Sanford and College corner along the entire street of Gay Street. But again, this ordinance says that it only has to have a five foot setback in retail space on the ground floor. That could still have that same, similar development, something similar to the standard or West and Wright, or any of these other student houses that wouldn't be maybe student houses, but would be developments all up and down Gay Street, which does not, in my mind, and I think, and this is my opinion, but I feel like it's the opinion of others, too. We don't want apartment complexes lined up down Gay Street as an improvement to downtown. I feel like this is the city councils, this is the staffs, and this is the mayor's opportunity that if downtown really wants to grow down Gay Street, to come up with a viable mixed-use development solution that makes sense, and not a Band-Aid to keep a problem from happening with a knee-jerk reaction. I don't think the North Cuts are going to sell anytime soon. I think if the university gets an opportunity to buy any more property along Gay Street, they will do that on the west side. And so what I'm asking is that this not be approved as, as it is written, or at least the Gay Street part be taken out until we can have further discussions on how this would affect not only my home, but our small business of the hotel. Even with it being commercial, there's new competitors coming online. One is already opened. We are going to have to make adjustments at some point in time to survive, and that may be converting parts of the building. And so, again, like I said, I've talked to a number of you. I've talked to, um, a number of stakeholders within the downtown area, and I'm asking that this not be approved as it is written today without further exploratory of the stakeholders who have property on Gay Street and who are also the downtown business owners. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close the public here. Council, comments or questions?
Could it be said simply that the reason that we're doing this is to provide more commercial enterprises and more commercial, um, outlets, I guess, for, I hate to say, tax revenue or whatever reason, but our thrust is to reduce the number of residential, um, places, units?
You're really talking about a requirement in 2021, before this was changed to this, that 100% required ground floor commercial. Then 100% didn't require ground floor commercial, only south of Thatch, to now asking to go back to requiring, um, you can only do 30% residential, which is much more than it was in 2021 before it's changed. But there's also things, it's not just commercial, that you, you and I can go to. There's other uses the planning director can go over that, that calculate in this. One of the challenges is, is spend some time on Gay Street and College Street, and spend time on Gay Street in this vicinity and see how busy it is with vehicular traffic and volumes of people. Um, and, and the goal here is to have some balance, so everybody else in the urban core doesn't get this privilege. They either got to comply with the 30% rule, and some of them have to comply with 100% rule on the college edge overlay. So this is balancing back out to get some of this where you don't only walk by residences, and we've made some design changes. I did want to correct that, um, changes in, in a house don't mean that you have to comply with fenestration requirements. If the structure is not a brand-new tear-down and redo, there's a lot of flexibility there. A fenestration is glass and having to deal with a number of things like that. So one of the challenges is, Mr. Worth is absolutely correct, that, that is one home there. The planning director, in the current scenario and the, and the proposed scenario, has the ability to waive that requirement. I, I think that the challenge is, you're talking about a house that would, what I believe Mr. Worth was referring to, if they had a, and we don't want this to happen, a structure fire, could they put that house back? By ordinance, that would give the planning director the ability, if it's more than 50% destroyed, he would have the ability to make that call as to whether or not they could put that back. I think if you're not tearing the structure down, you're talking about very different things, and I'll have Mr. Wahid Cotton speak about that a little bit more and where he's coming from.
Yeah, that is correct. So a lot of the, a lot of his concerns can be allayed by the nonconformities clause in the zoning ordinance. And so he would have to do, I guess there would have to be significant work that would equal greater than 50% of the market value of the home, or there'd have to be significant damage done greater than 50% of the value of the home. And then even though there is the option for a waiver request that would serve as, uh, I, I guess, I said, essentially a waiver, um, for any of the requirements that would meet some of the larger scale developments. And so I guess, then I, I guess kind of also on the, on the other side of the nonconformity, just currently in the UC district, single-family housing is not allowed. And so this, this does meet the nonconformity clause. And so any of the concerns that he has laid up here, and also like when we discussed, like I said, they are covered by the nonconformities clause, and it would have to be significant either renovation or damage done to the house for the house not to be reconstructed as is, and then have to come into compliance.
So if there was, a tree fell on his house, or there was a major fire, and more than 50%, they would come to the planning director and ask for a waiver?
No, so, and so, and so I guess it would fall under the nonconformities clause, and so I guess nonconformities are just kind of the existing in the ordinance, and it is an existing nonconformity as a single-family detached home in the urban core district. And I want to, it's not 50% of the structure. It is 50% of the market value as far as damage is concerned. And so being in the urban core with that lot size, it is a significant amount of damage or upgrade that would have to be done to the property for it to not qualify as a nonconformity, to maintain its status as a nonconformity. So that, that's what I'm saying. I mean, highly unlikely, I guess otherwise, like intentional, that it would not be able to maintain that status as a nonconformity and maintain its status as a single-family detached home downtown.
Yeah, the total valuation of the lot itself, and then plus the improvements, is very high, so. And the worst have invested much in this area, um, no doubt about that. But again, at the time, the, both the hotel and this were renovated, the rules were different. It was also treated, because it had been an active home, and they did a wonderful renovation. That is why it was reoccupied. It's a, a very nice renovation, and so it, it worked in all those metrics before. This is actually less stringent than it was before it was changed in 2021.
Yeah, yeah, they did a tremendous job. That house was really worn out.
Absolutely.
Tired and not well taken care of. They've done a beautiful job with it.
Any other comments?
I wonder if you could just, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a little difficulty with this. I, I wonder if you could just give us a quick overview of how you got to, uh, feel that this amendment was necessary? What, what, what were the factors that, that got us here?
Yes, yeah, certainly. So I guess, um, can we go to...
We've got some maps for you.
Yeah, so this is, oh, man, the, all right, so I just kind of, what's on the screen, I, I guess currently? So that's just kind of what's proposed, uh, just kind of as is, just kind of where the current, where the current restrictions exist, and then where there are no restrictions. I guess, as you see, just kind of, if you were anyone who would walk downtown now, just kind of the feel of Gay Street and College Street has completely changed. It's kind of been a primary extension of downtown, essentially. And so, right now, there are no restrictions on it. There are significant property down there that could redevelop, that would be able to redevelop without any restrictions. And so we just could get residential walk-ups for this entire, and that's a very long urban block. And so that was just one of the things, just kind of from my thought process. And then also, that'd be a very large strip without any commercial amenities to a lot of the residents that could be coming in, in these areas. So, there was the mention of tax revenue, but a big part of it is providing the commercial amenities and the retail amenities in these areas and these large swats that could eventually be redeveloped and have a significant number of residents.
Does that help you, Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
I wonder if you could also speak to Mr. Worth's concerns about, yes, he may get assurances from this current iteration of city council and staff, but what does, what are the implications for him 10 years from now when there is a different group of people here?
Yes, certainly. So, there's twofold. So there's the waiver that is in the ordinance. And then like I said, there is the existing nonconformity clause that is also in the subdivision, that is also in the zoning ordinance. And so the nonconformity clause, like I kind of outlined, it's not 50% of the structure. It is 50% of the market value of the lot. And so whether that be through renovation that they chose to do or damage that was done to their house, it would have to be a significant amount for them to not qualify.
So regardless of who is at the helm at any given time, this nonconformity clause kicks in.
Yeah, those things are in the zoning ordinance today unless it is changed otherwise. However, to the planning director's waiver, you can always appeal the interpretation of the planning director to the board of zoning adjustment. So, it is possible that if the planning director were to turn down, say any property owner asked for a waiver and turned it down, they could likely appeal his interpretation of turning it down to the board of zoning adjustment. We haven't gone that far, but I likely believe that could happen because it pretty much says so. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. So, like I said, there's a process where people submit interpretations to me, or to the planning director. And if you disagree with the planning director's interpretation, it can go to the BZA. So should there ever be an interpretation that is not favorable of granting the waiver for Mr. Worth, you would have the options and the recourse of filing an appeal to the BZA of the planning director's interpretation.
The goal of putting the planning director in there was we work with people all day, every day. And when there can be reasonable interpretations made, it avoids that for the applicant of having to go all the way through that adjudication process. But at the end of the day, you know, the goal is, I agree that all of us can change out. A planning director is typically looking at a pure planning exercise. We've dealt with this on some houses that are in the urban core that branch off of some of the smaller streets in this vicinity as well because there's some houses or duplexes left. And people have built bigger houses because they couldn't put a duplex back because there was no way to rebuild one. There's, and some of that speaks to the zoning ordinance and how it's been for a very long time.
BZA is the last level of appeal to that.
You can, you can go to the circuit court after that, and people have.
Yes, looking at this map here that you've provided, this is the current map. This is the current requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Other than the obvious of extending it on down Gay Street and wrapping around College, well, not wrapping around, but also on College, how does it differ? What we're proposed to vote on tonight, how does that differ from this map?
Yeah, there we go. Alright, yeah, so.
Other than the extension, how does it differ in requirement for those places on the dotted line?
Yeah, so the dotted lines, I guess that we want to include is the 30%. And that's just, the only addition, like I said, was just two lines of additional of Gay Street and College Street, south of Thatch. And so they could still have residential, but it's only up to 30% of like the street frontage.
Everybody north of Thatch has to comply with this today. Or more stringent, or no residential on the ground floor.
I see in the legend here, 30% ground story frontage is allowed for residential uses per the dotted line. How does that differ in impact from the wording that we're voting on tonight for the same places that are, some of them are south of Magnolia and?
No, we're not changing anything but that below. Anything south of Thatch is all that's changing.
Yeah.
Right, I'm not talking about the extension of these lines. I'm talking about the impact of the requirement on those who are already under the requirement. Is the requirement itself differ, different?
No, 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 no. So everybody who?
Just extending the territory.
Correct, yeah, so everybody who already has to comply, this is not changing for them. So everybody north of Thatch, this is not changing. Whatever requirements you had coming into tonight, you will have, should this be approved, this is only, this would only change things for people on South Gay, for South Gay Street, south of East Thatch and South College Street, south of East Thatch.
And can you take the dots away that you just put on there so we can see the old map? There you go. So it goes down to Thatch and does not cross over Thatch.
Correct, as written today. But that's the rest of the entirety of the urban core zoning district.
But that's as of 2021, prior to 2021.
Everybody except for College Edge had the, well, I think College Edge was the same too.
Yep, yeah, so prior to the most recent amendment, everybody had to comply and build commercial or retail on the ground floor, period.
The affected area here was more restrictive prior to 2021 than it is
Yes.
Yes.
Today, and it was more restrictive than it would be if we approved this amendment.
Yes, and I guess kind of the biggest distinction is the side streets kind of down there, like Miller, Casey, Armstrong, a lot, those do not have commercial requirements now and they will not have commercial requirements after this. But before, on the original one, they had commercial requirements, should there have been redevelopment?
So, this iteration, this proposal, does it limit what Mr. Worth can do? Any choice that he makes, be it a complete tear-down of his home and an extension of the hotel or whatever he might dream up? Are there restrictions on what he can do?
No, and so as an answer to that, I think normally, normally retail is a subset of commercial. In this instance, retail and commercial are synonymous. The hotel 100% complies and is commercial. So if he ever did a renovation to his hotel, it's not like the bottom would have to be, like it would have to reflect a strip mall. The hotel is commercial and does comply with the order.
Meets that definition.
Correct.
And even down to the back of the property, I'd have to look at minimum lot sizes in the urban core. But if something different were to be built on the back of the property, it just, it just depends on what it is. It's very hard to speak. So he's talking about removing parking, you know, and it's a pretty narrow space back there. But again, it's back to what the urban core regulations give and do not give. But in terms of use of this as a house, barring is, you know, a major, major disaster, it's fine to remain as is. Other uses want to come along and occupy with it. If he wants to flip this to one-floor residential and, you know, his main floor is commercial and his bottom floor is residential or whatever, that's something that can be looked at, but I don't see it as majorly problematic.
Nope.
That would be an example, subject to a waiver from you, or would it come?
Well, you're looking at percentages, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so that'd be covered by the nonconformity clause.
His property is currently?
An existing nonconformity.
Two lots?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's the residential property and then the hotel itself.
If his property was one?
Wouldn't change anything.
It wouldn't change anything?
Mm-hmm.
I'm presuming he's had these discussions with you or with staff members?
We did meet with Mr. Worth prior to today, yes.
I think his concern was not with himself, but what's best for Auburn? And are we doing what we intentionally want to do here for 50 years from now? Is this where we want to head? And I don't think I've had that discussion, but I don't know what kind of a large precedent we're setting here. I guess our precedent is to extend commercial down Gay Street.
You're making this part of the urban core the same requirement as the rest of the urban core is what you're doing. Instead of it, instead of it having a different requirement, has the same requirement is equal to everything but what we consider College Edge, which is College and Magnolia proper, which has a full restriction of no residential on the ground floor. One of the challenges is, as we grow and densify this area, and remember the comprehensive plan says in a one-mile radius of campus, we want to be dense and walkable. We need to make sure we're providing services for people. You know, I learned, before the university had issues with Cambridge, that it was their most popular dorm location. Why? You know, Hayday Market has a good bit to do with it, but so does Publix. And so do the services downtown adjacent that the students that were living there could walk to. And so we see that, those are some of the game changers that have happened is since we've changed this, we're also seeing, we've had changes in family relationships and inheritances may change and property may turn. And what we want to be sure we're doing is setting property up for success. And the goal is to pull not full commercial, not like the standard, but to pull some commercial further down Gay Street to allow services to those properties that could develop very densely. And again, it's 30% residential would be allowed. And you can get a waiver for 100% of it, either from the planning director or if you don't agree with him, the board of zoning adjustment.
You know, this is certainly a recognition of Auburn being a larger city and having a larger downtown. In my lifetime, I do not know that we've had a commercial on this side of Gay Street. Certainly the other side, there's been a fast food restaurant, there's been a pizza restaurant over the years, but this side is not. But if we look at what Auburn's going to be in '25 and '26 and '27 and '28, obviously the consideration of having some type of commercial there and it being available to students who are going to be living in the area does make planning sense, in my opinion. But this is a lot to consider. I'm looking at some of y'all's faces and some of them a little wide-eyed. I don't, I don't know where the council is right now and what your pleasure would like to be, if you'd like to, we want to vote on this tonight? Or do we want to postpone, have a work session next two weeks? And spend some more time talking about it? I just, I'm just, I'm just making a call based on my observation of being with you guys for the last couple of years and knowing where I think you're confident and ready to vote and where you're maybe not. So just speak up, please.
I would say that it's interesting to me that I haven't had that many exchanges with people about this. And I think Mr. Worth makes a valid point in terms of not being too hasty and allowing some of these property owners, certainly on that western side of South Gay Street between Miller and Thatch, to weigh in, or at least, I presume they're aware of what's happening. But I have not, I have not received any correspondence from anybody and I don't know whether there's an appetite here to postpone for a meeting or two, I don't know.
I've had a couple of conversations with property owners who saw this on the planning commission docket when it was a month ago and have had multiple conversations with them. And I believe that those individuals who are property owners have had conversations with the planning director, is my understanding, and that they are satisfied with the changes that were proposed. And there aren't that, I mean, there aren't that many property owners to confer with that I believe the majority of them have already spoken to you. Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah.
I would not be, I mean, I feel confident in the planning staff's recommendation and the planning commission's recommendations with regard to this, especially since it was prior to 2021, very different. And I think this is a more balanced approach and is in keeping with the rest of the urban core north of this area. So I would be comfortable moving ahead with a vote this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
When was the last time this area was studied, I guess, for?
2021, meaning looking at design standards and a few other minor things. Because there had been some requests to undo some of the retail requirements based on vacancies seen throughout the urban core. Those vacancies have changed since then. We're also in a little bit of a different situation than we were now, again, with some scenarios. Mayor Pro Tim Witten is correct. We've, there are not a ton of property owners in this area. There's just a very small handful in this vicinity. And you heard from one of them tonight who owns two of those parcels.
Alright, will this council move forward? Ready to vote?
I agree with Ms. Witten.
Okay, okay, Lindsey, roll call.
Taylor?
Okay, maybe I need to ask the question. So we're voting to amend this?
Yes, we're voting to, yes. We've been, just as it reads right there.
For the second drawing that we just seen, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, amended, yes.
That was a yes?
Proposed, right there in front of you.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Alright, Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Foreman?
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Hey, motion carries. Item 10A1 is a request for conditional use approval of a commercial support use manufacturing for property located at 2230 Pumphrey Avenue, Unit E in the Industrial Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its September 12th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes to speak. Okay, so you know one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a request for conditional use approval of an industrial use for metal fabrication for property located at 2117 McMillan Street in the Industrial Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its September 12th meeting and a public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. So you know one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A3 is a request for conditional use approval of a community shopping center use for the Ogletree Village Shopping Center located south of Morse Mill Road and west of Ogletree Road in the Planned Development District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its September 12th meeting. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Motion in a second. I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. So you know one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I just want to note, this is really an administrative change, correct?
Absolutely, this is a neighborhood shopping center. You guys have already approved things previously with Planned Development District changes that up the square footage that this change should have been made at that time. Anything else to add?
Nope, that's correct.
No additional square footage is being added.
No additional square footage. You've looked at the Planned Development District changes already and this is actually just a catch-up provision and would be best labeled as a community shopping center by square footage.
Just want that clarification out there.
Perfect.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A4 is a request for conditional use approval of a commercial support use, a warehouse RV storage for property located at 419 West Veterans Boulevard in the Comprehensive Development District Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its September 12th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Have a motion in a second. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Does the staff have any concerns about the visibility of this and the materials that are used?
Yes, so there was a waiver requested and the condition that this was approved by from a material standpoint is that they have to satisfy, essentially they have to satisfy the request of staff just from a visual standpoint. A lot of the discussion just kind of centered around how far down should the brick go on these units since they are essentially parallel to the road? Not parallel, perpendicular to the road. And so there's a lot of discussion on that. So there's going to be, a lot, there's going to be, I guess, once they submit the visuals for that, there'll be a discussion with that about how far it's going to go down and then where. And also, they had a fence and a wall. So there's a significant discussion at Planning Commission about that and that was one of the conditions related to the aesthetics, but there was another condition associated with it as well.
Are we okay to vote on it tonight?
Yes, and so we have done that in the past. And so there were other approvals on this road as well where they had to sat- And so there were other approvals on this road as well where they had to sat, where the condition set by Planning Commission was that they had to satisfy staff just from a aesthetic standpoint. And then they got, they were granted the waiver, but they had to satisfy staff. That way they didn't just throw up a corrugated metal building where fasteners were exposed. And so they'll, they'll have to submit visuals associated with their DRT. And like I said, it's something that we have done in the past on the Wallace Corridor.
Waiver is with the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B1 authorizes a contract with Hoare Program Management LLC for project management of the Boykin Donahue Campus Construction Project in the amount of $836,689.
May for approval.
Second. Have a motion to second. Any comments or questions? This, would you explain what this is, please, Megan?
So we've been using Hoare Program Management to help first with design processes and projects. We utilize their assistance out of Environmental Services and Public Works. And now here on the Boykin Donahue Campus, we have a lot of moving parts and a lot of consultants. So based on time constraints of our staff, we have, they help provide construction estimates, advise and keep design teams in line. And this would be day-to-day, and I'll have our city engineer explain a little bit more onsite project management. We are first undertaking a very large demolition of existing or former Public Works and Environmental Services. Ultimately, our Fleet Services building, that's all get to get demoed. Then we have to do tons of site work and so on. So what we're paying HPM for is to manage all of, all that's going on onsite. Yes, city people will go out there, but they're day-to-day operationally in keeping a large team of consultants and the contractor on the straight and narrow. They'll, they'll review all change orders. They'll advise us, but they're also our eyes and ears daily on the ground. City Engineer Fraser, have anything else? Okay.
So the potential for the city council to potentially look at amending the contract in the next agenda item. If that were to happen, if that were to happen, would that change this amount?
It should not change this amount. It was negotiated either way, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Right. And item 10B2 authorizes a contract with WW Compton Contractor LLC for construction of the Boykin Donahue Campus project in the amount of $17,104,000.
Ms. Taylor? I'm going to give you a chance to, to make the motion on this one.
Okay, I move that this.
With this, do you need to, do we need to, if we want to consider amendment?
To approve the agenda item as proposed. And then if you want to amend it, you, you've got to, you got to have a motion to second first to get the business on the floor.
Move for approval. Yeah, all right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion to second. Now.
Okay. Okay, now with this Boykin Donahue Campus project, what, what buildings does this? I guess we're talking about the 17.104 million. So this, this, this is not the complete.
So this consists of the demolition of the existing Public Works, Environmental Services and Fleet Services facilities, construction of a new library, a parking lot, a playfield, multipurpose trail, splash pad, relocation of the recycling center and widening of Donahue Drive to accommodate left and right turn lanes into these new facilities. That is what's in the 17.104 million dollar base bid.
Okay, so that does not include the cultural center?
No, ma'am. The cultural center is an additive alternate, and that's a 1.13 million dollar alternate. Just to explain a little bit further, when we discussed this last summer, the council wanted to isolate the cost of the cultural center. And we thought, at that time, staff thought it would be about a million dollars. And then later estimates actually made it higher. And it came in at 1.1 million dollars. And we told you we would bid it as an alternate. So you knew the specific cost because right now you don't see broken down what's the specific cost of the library or the splash pad. There's an allowance, but you don't see all those. The cultural center, you wanted to isolate that. That's why we bid it as an alternate. So if you're interested in building that for the price that you see here, you need to amend the resolution. You have a sample motion in your packets to add it. And then vote on the amendment separately. And if you amend it, then you would vote on the whole, you know, the amended resolution.
Okay, so with that being said, if we vote for this contract for those three buildings, are we allowed to come back? If, if this passed tonight, the amendment that we're trying to do? How would that affect?
You need to do it at once. You cannot separate the two. If we're going to award a bid, it has to be, once you've awarded the bid, we can't go back and change the parameters of that. So the base bid is without the cultural center. If you want to add the cultural center, you need to amend this main motion that's already been made to include it. Or we can't go back. We'd have to build it at a separate time with a separate contractor or rebid it at a much later date.
Would you say a much later date? So is, is price now at one point?
One, three million?
One, three. So if we do it on down the road, would that price go up, do you think?
It could. You're remobilizing a contractor and doing other things. One of our challenges is when you have a construction site that, that is this massive, the successful bidder has control over the entire site because they would be grading the whole thing and stubbing some utilities for the cultural center building anyway. So you can't allow another contractor to come on the, the property that we're holding contractor A responsible for and, and make erosion control issues or there's liability issues and so on. So you have to, you'd have to wait until in essence we're done with the original phase before you come back and build a cultural center.
Well, right now we, we are budgeted for that. We do have it in the budget for the 1.3 million.
Yes, ma'am. The project came in under budget and we did consider when we gave you budgeted numbers, the cultural center in that amount.
Okay. And I guess, I guess before I go on, maybe I need to hear from other council members as, for, as what their thoughts is on, on this project.
Well, let me just speak first, Connie. Overall, I'm very excited about the project. Look forward to us reimagining what Boykin is today and what it can be. When this idea first was brought forth, it was brought forth by a citizen that had the concept of the city of Auburn building a, a Rosenwall-like school that would celebrate the lives and the history of our African-American citizens. And we met with the prior city manager, Connie and myself, and Chief Dawson. And, and the idea at that time was potentially, I'll, I'll use Habitat as a model, but it would be like a community build. The reality is when the city takes ownership and, and constructs a building, it has to be built differently than a residential house. It has to be built to commercial standards. There, there are life safety issues that have to be taken into account. And the world has changed since this idea first came up. It costs a lot more money to construct things and our community is very busy. And the local contractors who do a lot of the construction in Auburn are really busy. And so the staff designed this to be a properly utilized commercial building that the city would operate and oversee. And, and we bid it as an alternate. I believe, I believe that there could be a lot of great things that happen inside this building. I believe that the educational opportunities and the reflection opportunities and the speaking opportunities and all those things that can happen as we recognize all the people that have lived in our community can be a really big-time net positive for Auburn. But I will say to you that there are people that I'm sitting with right here that would like to have a little clearer vision of what that would be. And if that's what they, and I take ownership of that. And that's something that we can work towards over the next two weeks and create a clear, clear vision as to how this building would be used and how it would be governed and how it would be operated on a daily basis. And potentially come back on October the first and, and look at adding this. That's just an idea. But I am, I am bullish on the idea of, of having this facility. And I believe it would create very positive opportunities for our community and very positive interaction with all people in our community, all races, all folks. So there's my two cents.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with you. I think you described it perfectly. I, I remember the, the discussions in the council previous to this one. And I thought there was a lot of great possibilities to enrich our town with such a facility. And I would be certainly excited about it. And certainly on the good news of the fact that we're significantly under budget on this whole project. This added cost amounts to less than 20% of the returns of the, the original estimate. So, you know, for what it's worth, for my 20 cents, I'm, I'm very excited by the possibility of it. And I would be enthusiastically supportive of such a, such a project.
Anyone else?
And I, and I do understand that, you know, we did this, we, we actually voted on this or talked about this during the first four years that we was on the council. And some of us is new and we really don't know all the details and what this entails. So I don't have a problem with postponing it until we get that information. Postponing it until the first meeting in October. And maybe we can, you know, you can do some type of work session and make the ones that, who's not familiar with this particular project or the cultural center and give them a clear understanding. And then maybe we can vote on it after we have the work session. So I can, I, I have no problem with postponing it until that.
And speaking of that, that date, excuse me, Connie, this contract has to be awarded on October 1st.
We run into deadlines. Bids are only valid for 30 days, Allison. And we could ask contractor for an extension, but October 1st, we would prefer you not let it get outside of that. I need to have a clear understanding of what you want in the next two weeks. We have been over the building with the entire council, this council.
It's the programming. I think it's just the use of the government.
Programming we will not have. So that is, the, the goal was for you to decide if you're going to do this. My understanding from the consensus of the, of the council previously is you would establish some sort of commission or board. There would be a council-established board that would advise you on the use of this facility. Staff will help manage the facility and deal with the daily operations of it. But this also is to have a certain grade of schoolchildren come through for some specific programming and then to have some displays in there that either rotate or remain. It's not a museum. I don't, that's why I want to call it a display. And you can have some small events there relative to what's being displayed. That was, that, those are the broad discussions that have been had to date. And in, at least my understanding was if you guys were going to move forward with this, that is what we would then establish. The council would then want to establish the parameters for a board, likely a five-member board with staggered terms. You know, we would do the regular on that. And you would pick people with specific knowledge or lens or, you know, stature in the community and historians and so on to help with that. That's, that's kind of where it has been over the last five, five or so years we've been talking about it.
And I'm not suggesting anything besides that. I'm just suggesting that we've never formally sat down with everybody on the council. And I, I sensed today, talking to people, that they didn't have a clear understanding of what was happening. And they, and that approving 1.3 million dollars, they'd like to have a better understanding. And so just stepping back for a second and having those conversations could be worth it to this council to get everybody where they feel comfortable. I'm not, you know, I, I think we all understand how this ultimately would be governed and run on a day-to-day, day-to-day basis. But just the discussion of the people who are responsible for approving this money to help them understand how it'd be used, I didn't sense everybody was in good standing on that and they'd like a little more information. I, if I'm wrong about that, please speak up. Please speak up.
I think you're on the right track, Mayor. But I, I do think we need to, as Megan mentioned, we need to have a board or whatever you want to call it gives input on what goes in this cultural center. I think it needs to be from people in the, in the community over there off around Boykin. They have a say-so when it comes in over there. And I think this thing got started when I mentioned honoring Ms. Rosa Parks, but I hadn't seen.
It did, it did.
Hadn't heard anything about honoring her yet, so. If we're going to spend that kind of money, I certainly think she needs to be honored. Like I said, I've asked for that for several years now.
You're exactly right. That's where it started, in the old building next door.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Well, so Ms. Taylor, we can, there is, I'm not sure. You were kind of moving towards asking an, a motion to postpone till October 1st. You, you didn't formally do that. So I, I'll ask if you'd like to formally make that motion.
Well, I, I would like to, you know, if, 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 you know, the council members that we're referring to, you know, if they want more input on how this facility is going to run and everything, I would like to formally postpone this until the October 1st meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to postpone until, I need to say anymore?
Yeah, I just need some clarity what you need from staff during the work session because I'm not clear on what else.
Do we need to give that to you right now?
Well, we've got two weeks from tonight. You're talking about this again. So I need some clarity from you about what it is you want to meet about. I'm not clear on that.
Okay.
Because I, I don't see in the next two weeks, and it's the only thing, we're happy to do a work session. I don't know that we can answer any of those questions for you. Those are things that you need to answer for yourselves. As I'm reading that, what are you expecting out of this? We, we have limited information at this stage without such a board in place. And Rosa Parks?
So maybe, maybe, I guess why everybody pondering over it, maybe the, the ones who have questions and don't get a quite, get an understanding, maybe they can submit those questions before we actually do the work session.
Yeah, any, any information you can provide, whether it's tonight or whenever, it's just I want to gear up and get you as much information as possible.
Would that include perhaps a summary of, of what occurred several years ago to bring, to bring this as a possible project? Maybe even if it's not a work session, it's a, a written summary that is shared with the council about how, how it ever, how it came about for those who may not know. Is that, is that a direction?
It can manifest itself in a number of ways. I, I mean, again, I, I sense that there were some folks up here that weren't ready, didn't feel comfortable voting on this because they didn't understand everything about it. I'm just trying to give everybody an opportunity to understand what they need to, so they feel comfortable voting on this. Okay? If, if I'm incorrect on that and everybody's comfortable, we can take a vote. But I'd hate for somebody to cast a vote because they don't understand. And then they have, you know, buyer's remorse in 24 hours and said, I would have supported that if I really knew it was going to be done.
If we say we want a board set up to look into determining how it's going to be built, can we go ahead and approve it? Megan and, and Mayor do that later on?
What, whatever the council wishes, that, that was, from, from what I've understood previously, that, that would happen. And so I think the goal would be to come forward to you. And if you want to just get information between now and then for anybody who needs it and also understand you want to, you, you tell me you want a resolution on that agenda establishing a five-member board or whatever it is.
I don't think we want that at all. I think, I think there's some people that have some questions. I think they want to ask those questions, probably primarily of myself and Connie and Tommy maybe, since we were the people that were in that first meeting. We can, and let's just get those questions answered and put it back on the agenda on October 1st. I, I sense that the council is very excited about this project and we want to see Boykin renovated and repurposed.
What I'm referring to with getting a board and all that is, once it's approved, I think it needs to be some oversight and exactly how it's going to be used and that type.
Totally agree. Totally agree. Board assistance, I agree.
I, I would support a postponement. I think that it would allow myself, being one of those new member, newer members of the council, opportunity to talk with you, Ms. Taylor, further about it and the city manager, further about the project and the intentionality behind it. So I, I would support postponing it to give us at least two more weeks to consider it.
I'd fall in line with Councilman Koblins there. I would like a little bit better understanding of, of, of how this space might be used in a way that other space that, that we're constructing could not be used.
And gladly. And I want to remind everyone, this was not a staff-generated project. It, it resided from a citizen and council members. So we'll do our best to answer those questions, but those, some are best answered by the council members that were involved at this time.
Starting off is one thing, kind of blew into.
Okay.
I mean, look, I, I just want to make sure that, that we're not building a, a 1.2 million dollar meeting room.
Yep.
And, and that is, that's sort of what I, when we have, this campus here is, it looks fantastic. I would imagine that when we build this library and we build, build the other buildings, that there will be ample space. So my, my questions primarily revolve around whether or not the programming and the impact of what we're trying to do could be accomplished in, in the other spaces that we're building or whether the building, this additional building is essential to, to making sure that, that we capture what we. we capture what we, what was initially intended.
Those are, you know, my sentiments exactly as well. Councilman Adams said it, said exactly how I feel about it, just want to ensure that what we're building here, that there's, if we can accomplish the, the goal of what we are intending within the spaces that we're doing as well, just looking at that consideration as opposed to in addition to. So, that's, that's, I follow in line with that line of questioning as well.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to postpone? Connie, did you officially make that motion? Was there a second?
There was a motion and a second, there was already a second.
A second, yeah.
All right, there was a second, okay. All in favor, postpone to October 1st, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum, this is your opportunity to speak to the council about anything on your mind. I'd ask that your comments be addressed to the council and remember that you have three minutes to speak and we ask that you give us your name and address for the record.
Justice, can you hand that to him? There's arrows, there's right and left, yep.
My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello, yeah. Can I start over?
Sign here. Go. My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Forty-two months ago, ordinance 3288 was passed by the STR five. Taylor, Griswold, Anders, Parsons, and Dawson. In conjunction with our data, city, no-data city bureaucrats and the eminent STR task force have taken away our constitutional rights and our property rights with 29 smokescreen months of pretend due diligence. Long-term rental is over 31 days, so they could have actually 11 rentals in a year. Eighty percent of the STR income came from 10 Auburn functions consisting of seven home football games and three graduations. Even the greedy corporate hotels cannot fill the hotel needs on those 10 functions. But the STR five did not care to help fill the need and stepped past ordinance 3288 that hinged on a discriminatory zoning practice. The STR five are responsible for the theft of millions of dollars, the 151-plus families with $130,000 stolen from my family overall in the 42 months. Linda Dean's ragtag selfish group, Don't Hotel Our Neighborhood, controlled the narrative of Councilman Griswold and Councilman Parsons. Every discussion I had with Griswold and Parsons concerning STR, when they would get stumped, they would go back to Mrs. Dean's safe line of defense and say, "My home is a hotel because I was getting money," their only defense. Griswold and Parsons says, "This is a hotel. This is my house and my wife's house," okay? What's a real hotel? This is a real hotel, this is the new graduate hotel known by many as the Anders Hotel. Mayor should have recused from the STR vote. Griswold and Parsons said, "This is a hotel. This was former Councilman Steve Dixon's home, by the way, who recused himself from STR vote, something the mayor should have done. Now, this is a real hotel, this is the hotel at Auburn University. But I have a simple solution for this madness, okay? Create an amendment to ordinance 3288. Allow all zoning should be open to short-term rentals, but the homeowner have to prove their home is their permanent residency. But if they have multiple homes to rent in the city, they will be commercial STR and fall under the zone restrictions already in place. This would solve all the issues of the Don't Hotel Our Neighborhood Payne Street issue and restore the remaining 151 remaining families, their property and their constitutional rights." Thank you.
Susan, hold on just a second, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Bolt, 1188 East University Drive. This was a great weekend for Auburn football, for some, anyway. We still have a two-tiered justice system in the city of Auburn when it comes to short-term rentals. I brought this item to your attention at least two times before, yet it's still happening. This is a picture of the mayor's campaign manager's house that is in a prohibited zone, yet he is still doing short-term rentals. I asked these particular people if they indeed rented this house for the weekend and they told me that they did. Why, Mayor, is your campaign manager still being allowed to do short-term rentals?
He's not my campaign manager.
He was your past campaign manager.
No, he was never my campaign manager.
Interesting.
Yep, just trying to help you.
Yeah, thank you there. While I miss out on $15,000 for the first five football games, how is it, Mayor, that your not campaign manager is still allowed to do short-term rentals? Tonight, I'm making a public report of the infraction at this particular house, who is not your campaign manager, and expect you and the city to enforce the ordinance of the campaign manager or rescind the ordinance and allow all of us to do, resume our short-term rentals. The Graduate Hotel is now open for business to greet people coming to the city for short-term stays. The Graduate Hotel has 177 rooms, 151 families that were offering short-term rentals were zoned out by ordinance 3288, thus eliminating approximately 450 rooms provided by those 151 families. With those approximate 450 rooms eliminated from the short-term rental market, people might decide to stay at the Graduate Hotel. Eliminate 450 rooms, redirect them to the Graduate Hotel. The hotel lobby is the largest lobbying group associated with short-term rental industry. Their goal is to decimate the short-term rental industry. Mayor, why didn't you recuse yourself for the vote on the ordinance 3288? You had an obvious conflict of, excuse me, obvious conflict of interest since you were in the process of negotiating a multimillion-dollar land deal with your family property. It should be noted that construction for the hotel property didn't start until after the passage of ordinance 3288. Is that just an odd coincidence? I don't think so. Mr. Dixon recused himself, why didn't you? If you had recused yourself due to your conflict of interest, there would not have been a majority vote and the ordinance 3288 would not have passed. You needed that ordinance to pass, didn't you? Council, knowing that the ordinance would not have passed if the mayor had recused himself due to a conflict of interest, I am asking you all to do the right thing and rescind ordinance 3288.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
My name is Leah Billy Welburn, 112 North de Barteleben Street, apartment 5. I came up here to say thank you for some of the great things our city has. I was just tonight at the Frank Brown Rec Center where I've been going to an intermediate volleyball game, it's been a lot of fun. Another program that, and facility that I'm really grateful for is the public library. I know there've been a lot of folks coming up and making comments and it sounds like there's been some controversy, but my experience with the library has been nothing but positive the whole way through. I worked as a nanny in Auburn for seven or eight years and I love bringing the littles to the library. It's always cool to participate in the storytime or the other programming that they have for young children. And also, it's nice to just see the friendly faces of the librarians, they're always helpful with pointing me towards resources and showing how we can request items we're interested in to get the collection expanded. As I'm sure you all are aware, there's a process in place for challenging materials that are inappropriate. It seems that folks who have had objections to library content have done those and found the outcomes lacking. I'm sorry that you have to kind of sit there and listen to complaints because I feel that our city staff does a great job, including you all behind the dais, and I know it's a tough gig and I appreciate you all for doing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Yes, sir.
My name is Cecil Edwards, I live 1560 BFW Road and about three weeks ago, there had been some land cleared down on BFW Road and I hadn't talked to the planning committee, but I think the thing that I was heard was they're going to build a condo down there. So, I guess, should I go to the planning committee first and talk to them?
No, sir, it's a single-family detached house.
It's a single-family?
Yes, sir.
All right, no condo?
No, sir, it's, it's in a neighborhood conservation zoning district, which means that it can't be a condo, it has to be a house.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Who'll be next? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, reopen. There you go, you're good.
Ronnie Jackson, I don't know, 15, Ronnie Jackson, 1515 BFW Road. And we stay in a low-income neighborhood with 1,800 to 2,000 square feet. They're clearing off some land and them putting in a 3,000 to 4,000 square feet house. And that's going to make the value of our land go up and most of senior citizens are staying in the neighborhood. And we were born and raised down there and we're going to fix them come, and I don't know how we're going to be able to handle all of that. You know, that's our neighborhood and we were born and raised down there. They put on building $600,000 home, home, they planning on building all behind our house and all around in our neighborhood and they're going to increase the land value and the taxes on our land and we don't, most of us down there, as a senior citizen, we don't fix them come. We need to, we'll come to an agreement on some kind of arrangement.
Sure, we, I'm not sure what we can do with that, I wasn't aware there was some construction going on down there. If you leave your name and address with, with Mr., with either Mr. Cotton or Mr. Cummins, we can get back in touch with you later on this week, is that okay?
Okay, got it, ma'am.
Yeah.
Appreciate you, ma'am.
Yes, sir, yes, thank you.
It's one house and several folks have contacted staff. It is a larger house than you see, there's a lot of traditional family property, a lot of longtime residents that live in the area, but a local builder is coming in, I don't know who they're building the house for, but it's quite a large house sitting on more than a one-acre parcel, it's slightly larger than an acre parcel, a good bit of the parcel's not buildable, but it is, it is a large house, it's, it's permitted by right, it meets all of our regulations, our, our inspection services department reviewed the home plans, I do understand the sentiment of the neighbors, we're happy to provide information, but the city has no legal ability to stop the construction of the home.
It's, are there not some homestead exemptions for persons of a certain age within the revenue at the county level for property tax exemptions?
Yes.
So, I would encourage individuals who may meet those, those stipulations to go see the revenue, or contact the revenue commissioner's office to see if you qualify for some homestead exemption relief on your property taxes.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Taylor, and I'm happy, I represent that area, I'm happy to sit down and talk with you guys as well alongside the city. If you leave your contact information there, I'd be happy to reach out and talk with you as well.
Certainly, and we can make the developer and we'll work through you as well, the home builder, because again, I don't know who the end user is aware of concerns.
Sure, thank you.
So, let me ask you a question, so, Mr. Jackson got up and said, well, the First Gentleman, he was saying that they was getting ready to build some houses around the neighborhood that's already there. So, none of that development had to go through the planning or it just, that people can just come in and clean out property because they own it and, and just start building houses because it's on a particular way? I'm just...
So, the one particular parcel, which is 1521 BFW Road, is that correct? I have two addresses from staff, 1521, both of you are probably referring to. That is one parcel, we have one house permitted there, it's, it's north of 4,000 square feet house, which is bigger than you see in what I'd, I'd call a longstanding neighborhood that has, has been in that area for generations and lots of family-owned property, but by zoning laws, the property owner had the right to sell or has the right to build a house that meets city requirements, it's a neighborhood conservation four, I believe?
I think it's 14.
14, so it's 14,000 square foot lot minimums, this is over an acre, which far exceeds that and a house can be built there, but to the condominium question, as I clarify, this is neighborhood conservation, it's not allowed and cannot be condominiums, it would be one house, but I also believe if I heard correctly and understood, some folks have reached out to staff, there's some property valuation concerns that part of what you're hearing is not just the homestead side, it's, well, if this house comes in and it's gigantic and is a 600 or 800,000 dollar house, is that going to drive up property taxes for everybody who lives adjacent to it? And that's something we can also work with the revenue commissioner a little more to speak to and again, we're happy to coordinate and try to help the citizens in that area get the information they need.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. We'll get with you.
We'll get with you after the meeting, sir. Yes, sir, yep, all right. We're still, citizens' communication's still open, is anyone else? I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, we'll close citizens' communications. Anyone on the council have anything they'd like to say?
I just want to say, I've known the mayor for quite some time and worked with him the last two years and I know the man of integrity, he's man of honor and I know that in any situation that would require for him to recuse himself, he would have done so and certainly would have supported his, his position then and I would support it now as far as recusing himself or not recusing himself. And the man I know, him to be is honorable and I know he would, he would do the right thing in that situation, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Anyone else?
I, I just want to ask a question. I think I sent an email to the city manager and the mayor about the air conditioning unit at Boykin. So, I just want to see what type of update, because I haven't heard of an update as far as the, the email that I sent.
Right, I responded to your email saying that we are working any and all angles, the manufacturer, there's a, there's a problem with the new air conditioner at Boykin and we don't have the same problem with the identical unit at Frank Brown. And we are not to the bottom of what the issue is yet, in terms of, we've been working on this for months, it's not functioning properly and it's a high humidity situation and we're working on it, but we can't, I have asked the question of the people who work there, it used to not be air-conditioned at all, so it's better than it was, but no, it's not, not functioning properly nor to our satisfaction, but we're also in some warranty situations, but we've had mechanical engineers, we've had the contractor, the manufacturer, we're bringing outside people in to address it. I convened multiple department heads in the building, we're, we're trying everything, we're monitoring at the roof the temperature and the gym the temperature, and there's something that is not working right with the unit that has not yet been identified and when it is, it will be corrected and it will improve.
Okay, and I, I just wanted to know because I got an address about it at the meeting over at Boykin, when we was doing the walkthrough. And so, it was, it was staff that, the staff over at Boykin that really said, it was really about the gym. So, I guess you're saying that the building itself, the air conditioner is working properly, but in that gym, and I walked through the gym, it was, it was extremely hot, I mean, yeah.
Right, I've been in there too, our staff has, we have a full staff there, we reset the unit on a daily basis, sometimes twice to try to get it to work properly. One of the things is, we're not allowed to do certain things or we will lose the warranty and I can't in good conscience adjust some things on it and explain to you why we need to spend 30, 40, $50,000 because we invalidated the warranty. So, we're, we're working through all of that, every angle, and like I said, I have five department heads and their collective staffs working on this. So, it's a lot of manpower, it's worth it and we will get it corrected, but we had, the problem has yet to be identified and we believe it's likely with the unit itself and the manufacturer. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yep, anyone else?
Yes, sir, Mayor from May. Mr. Wilkins made some statements, somehow I was involved in stealing something to do with this ordinance. I don't know what you're talking about there, I've never stolen anything in my life, I don't tend to start now at this age. And I think before you get up here and say things you say, you should make sure you got your facts right, and, uh, and the three-minute speaking is not meant to attack an individual person, it's meant to speak your problem that you may have, when trying to find a solution to it, but we're not going to find, the, the, the STR stuff is passed, unless somebody brings it back up and to, to change it, but I, I really would rather, I know, I know there's nothing I can say that's going to change it, you can come here every week doing something crazy, so, but, uh, uh, I wish you would refrain from accusing me of stealing anything from the city or from using my position for anything. And as far as the mayor, I've been knowing the mayor a long time, and I, he's got more sense than, than to do something like that, and I, I think that hotel was, but some other spaces before they finally settled on that space, didn't it?
Yeah, it was about the fifth location, the hotel was also approved nearly a year before the short-term rental ordinance was adopted.
Exactly, so I, I don't know where that's coming from, but I understand you have your right to come say what you want to say, but you don't have to attack a person's individual character. Like I said, you won't, you won't pay attention to nothing I say, you never have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I might as well jump on there as well. You know, when you're, when you're trying to make policy, I think, I think everybody up here has done the very best that they can to make a policy that they're comfortable with and that they believe reflects the, the general will of the constituents in Auburn. It's, it, the adversarial tone that happens with Mr. Wilkins is, it's unfortunate, because I can guarantee that none of us up here came to our decisions with any kind of, uh, feeling of, of enjoyment at the dissatisfaction of those people who may have been affected negatively. I think all of us have believed that we're doing the right thing for the vast majority of the, the people that we represent. I certainly feel that way, and I think the reelection of, my subsequent reelection reflects that. The, you know, the, the STR 5, I have designed a little T-shirt with all of us on it, but only because it's kind of, it, it, it doesn't reflect the reality, the reality of that policy. You know, it's, it's a, it's a peculiar thing to be labeled the STR 5, insofar as it, there's a complete disconnect with your willingness to create us as those folk, when in fact, I don't see myself as those folk at all, I just see myself as a guy trying to interpret the, the, the concerns and cares of a lot of people that I represent, and, and I know, you may not agree with this, but I know that the response that I received from the determinations that we made on that policy were overwhelmingly positive, and that's how I can look myself in the mirror every day that I come here and try and do the, the right thing by the long-term residents, and every resident of this city.
Anyone else? Okay, move to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
Where adjourn?